A little bit different this time as far as the presentation, but the applicant, we asked that they keep their presentation under 10 minutes and they can reserve a couple of minutes after it for rebuttal. And the public is two minutes each unless they're representing an organization and they can have up to five. And Sean Alexander will be the timekeeper and he'll keep you abreast of that. Okay. Appeal the decision from the historic zoning commission pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You're advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of historic zoning commission. I'm gonna have this memorized one day. Let's see. I think we'll go ahead and do the minutes. Have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Meeting to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes been approved. I guess we'll say, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, 1514 Elmwood and 1419 Calvin have been removed at the owner's request or the applicant's request.
Elmwood and Calvin?
That's correct.
Elmwood. Don't look at my screen.
1514 Elmwood.
No, there's nothing on there.
14 Elmwood. There's two Elmwoods.
Okay. And 1419 Calvin. All right.
Do we make a motion to have those withdrawn or is it just?
They're just gone.
Okay.
Okay. First we do the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless they're a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, looks like there are seven items on the consent agenda. 3715 Princeton Avenue is an application to construct an addition. 3814 Richland Avenue, also an addition. 1410 Woodland Street, construct an outbuilding. 3105 Overlook Drive, it's an application to construct an addition. 1517 Elmwood Avenue, an application for, to construct an outbuilding. 3533 Central Avenue, application to construct an outbuilding. And an addition with, the addition requires a setback determination. And 1804 Lakehurst Avenue, that's an application to construct an outbuilding. Those cases have been found to meet their respective design guidelines and staff recommends approval of them.
Okay, thank you very much, Sean. Is anyone in the audience like to speak regarding these or taking in these off the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. Closed public hearing. Any discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Okay, I guess the 1013 Petway Avenue?
As we said there, we're gonna do things a little differently in the interest of time. This is an application for infill and staff is recommending approval with conditions. The applicant, I believe, agrees to all of the conditions, so unless there's objection, we recommend approval. We'll skip the full presentation unless necessary.
Okay. I will give the applicant, if you'd like to, is the applicant here today? Maybe come forward and then just state your name and just say that you're okay with staff recommendations on record and then that'll work good for us.
Okay, great. My name is David Baird, I'm the architect. We agree to all the recommendations.
Great, okay. Thank you very much. Oh, any questions at all? All right, thank you. I will open public hearing. Is anyone like to speak regarding this project or if you have questions about it? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion or motion?
Move approval with staff's recommendations.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, 1013 Petway Avenue has been approved with staff recommendations. Okay, 3927 Cambridge Avenue?
This is really a very simple project that is a partially screened rear porch that meets the design guidelines in all ways except for its location, which is fully within the rear setback area. The design guidelines require that the massing of new construction in relation to open spaces be compatible with the historic buildings around it. And staff is concerned that since a lot of this depth is typical for this portion of the district, a precedent could be set allowing for multiple properties to have up to a five-foot rear setback, which could result in a dramatic change to the open space of these rear yards, especially since there's no rear alley to provide additional buffer. And a garage is already constructed in a portion of the rear setback area. The project does not meet the commission's policy for granting rear setback determinations that are different than bulk zoning. The policy allows for appropriate side or rear setbacks to be based on existing setbacks seen historically, the shape of the lot, alley access or lack thereof, and the proximity of adjoining structures and property lines. Since there is no rear alley, there's no opportunity to provide an additional buffer between this property and the one behind it. The lot is approximately 102 feet deep, which is similar to other lots in the immediate vicinity. Staff did not find that the request met the commission's requirements of unusual conditions and finds that it could set a precedent, again, for those neighboring lots. Staff recommends disapproval, finding that the project does not meet the commission's policy for determining setbacks that are different than bulk zoning or the design guidelines for open space, and because approval could set a precedent for fully building out the rear setbacks of neighboring properties. In summary, the project does not meet Sections 2BB, 2B2, for scale, location of an addition, and setbacks. And I'm sure the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Robin at this point? Okay, we may call you back. All right, would the applicant like to come forward and just state your name and address?
My name is Dale Stover. I'm representing Tafik and Kristen Assad who live at 3927 Cambridge Avenue. I work for Legacy Construction Company who would be the ones that would do this project. The Assads would like to build a 13 by 13 and a half screened porch at the back of their house. They've lived at this house a little less than two years. They love the home, they love the community, they're expecting their first child in March and planning on making this their home. They feel like building a screened porch on the back of the house would enhance their quality of life. They believe it really would be the best use for the very, very small backyard area that is behind their house. And of course, obviously, it would provide a great way to enjoy the great outdoors without mosquitoes and bugs and so forth. So they would, that's why they would like to build a screened porch. They feel like obviously behind the house is the appropriate spot, not in front, there wouldn't be areas on the side on their property. Because of the size of the lot and specifically the location of their building, that's why this screened porch would have to go back to within five feet of the property line. If you will look at the vicinity map there, there are about 18 lots listed there on page two are shown. Almost all of them could accommodate a 13 by 13 screened porch and still allow 20 feet or in many cases much more between there and the property line. But the Assad's property and their house location and the one next to them at 3929 are the two that would not allow that. So that's why we're asking for this exception, why most lots in that vicinity would easily allow a screened porch in the back. This one, obviously, there was a question about, and that's why we're asking for the exception. Building, we would be using very little of the existing open space. You can notice there on the picture that at the back of the house, there is already a porch and stairs on both sides. That porch comes out four and a half feet. That would be removed to put this screened porch on. So we're asking for 13 and a half foot screened porch, so the four and a half feet's already being used. Actually, we'd just be building on nine more feet of what is called open space at this point. Again, we're just asking for an exception at this part, at this point. I believe that's what this commission always looks at individual projects and to see if there can be an exception, if there's not a problem. There is no interest on the Assad's or our part of trying to create a precedent. The Assad's are not trying to build all the building they can build to the back of the property line. They simply would like to have a screened porch in the back. And again, there are some things that restrict that according to the regular guidelines there. Again, we do not feel like, they're not asking for a precedent, just asking for an exception if you would consider this, if this screened porch does make sense. As far as a precedent, I know this commission, anytime they want and has, approved some building into the setback when it was not a problem. And hopefully that's what you will look at in this case there. It is not, again, not designed to be any kind of problem. Hope you'll look at it as just an exception, an individual project, and could the Assad's be allowed to have a screened porch? Believe it be a help to them. Again, it would be a great way to use that very small backyard area. There's not a big sprawling backyard, you're not cutting up any really green space there. They feel like it's the most effective way to use that area. So again, whatever you decide, we'll be glad to go along with, but I appreciate your time, appreciate your consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone would like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing.
Could I ask, Robin, could you again go over, because I'm having trouble finding it here and I'm sure it's here, but what our policy is on setback determination and why the staff feels this doesn't meet that policy? And then secondly, again, any part of the guidelines that it doesn't meet? Sorry, just to...
The guideline is 2BC for setback and rhythm of spacing. And right under that on page three, you'll see the policy for setback determinations. And in the past, it's usually been unusual conditions or maybe setbacks, existing setbacks that already didn't meet the, you know, meet current zoning or historically the setbacks were different. There wasn't anything unusual about this lot or, you know, again, the current historic buildings aren't built all the way to the five-foot rear property line, so we didn't feel like it met that policy. And then 2B2 talks about scale, excuse me, 2BB talks about scale and relation of open spaces, which is towards the top of page three.
And on this lot, the applicant said that these two lots were the two that were, the only two that were, didn't have this minimum setback. Is that the case all around the neighborhood, that these are only two? Or is that, there are other locations where this could be a similar condition?
Yes, if you look at page seven, that shows several lots that are roughly the same depth where you, you know, if you allowed for a five-foot rear setback, then you only have 10 feet between the rear of properties. Where normally rear yards are significantly more than that. And sometimes, and again, there's that alley that allows for an extra buffer too, that they don't have here.
In, looking at this one, just a question, I guess, to the staff is when, I don't know if this is the applicant's drawings, yeah, there's a hand sketch of a, the setback line, I think is determined by Metro, perhaps not a historic setback. There's a 30-foot setback line that defines the envelope from the street and then this house appears to be plus or minus 41 feet from the property line. Is there, in this case, we certainly wouldn't approve a front addition to the house and I think that, it's not an easy one to juggle certainly in, from the staff looking at this. What other, what other avenues were pursued with the applicant if, being that the staff is not in favor of this particular location?
This was a case where we thought that it may be that they've just built out the lot that they have because there is no opportunity on the side. There, you'll see that there's sort of a notch in the back, but that's where there are stairs down to the basement. So they felt like this was really the only location. And as you said, you know, obviously, a front addition wouldn't meet the design guidelines either.
Are the, it looks like from the overhead shot, there's a couple of condensing units in addition to the stairs down into the basement on the, in the notch, in the, I guess that'd be northeast if the, if the plan is north on the page near the item mark C, the existing patio. So that would be problematic for sure.
Any more discussion?
I mean, I think the staff has made the right recommendation based on our policies and guidelines, you know. It does seem, you know, this lot and the lot right next to it, the houses are extraordinarily close to the back setback already, or to the back property line. So there's, you know, there's almost no opportunity to do any kind of outdoor covered area that's within the, within the setback lines. So I think, you know, there's some condition here that's sort of exceptional to the remainder of the neighborhood. I understand the question of precedent. You know, and you, I guess you could argue, you know, with, there's outbuildings that are already within that setback on the lot. And does this negatively impact anybody around it? I don't know. Which, you know, is often, often what we look at in terms of setbacks and purpose for setbacks is to, to respect the neighbor's properties. So I'm not sure how, you know, again, I think the staff has made the right interpretation of our guidelines and policies. It's a question of whether this is exceptional or, you know. And do you have any, you look like you were...
Well, I agree with you in the fact that they have, already have a palpable deadline with it. It's part of the goal, well, it's part of the use of their yard. I agree with the staff recommendation. I'll move to adopt staff recommendation on 3927 Cambridge Avenue.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. You're voting no, right?
I think the motion here. No, we have to have four votes.
So I also vote with staff recommendations.
At 1625 Fatherland Street, we're reviewing an application to construct a rear addition to a historic house. The house, as you see here, has a pyramid, is a transitional Victorian or even maybe a high-style Victorian, with a pyramid-roofed cottage form with four gable projections, one to each side. The house also has what looks like an early addition and rear porch that has been enclosed. That's the rear porch there, or was the rear porch. It was shown on the 1914 Sanborn, but obviously it's since then has been enclosed. And the early rear addition at the far back there. The proposed new addition would be aligned flush with an original sidewall of the house on the left, this wall shown here, and flush with the wall of the early enclosed porch on the right side. Typically, as you know, new additions are required to sit in at least one foot from the sides of a historic house in order to distinguish the historic construction from the new construction. And if the addition were to perhaps set in from the sides before carrying back and then stepping back out flush, as they're drawn now, staff finds that that addition would be compatible as, other than that, the scale of the addition is appropriate in matching the height and width of the, of the existing house. The known materials of the proposed addition would be generally compatible with those of the house, including wood siding, fiberglass shingle roof, matching concrete block foundation. However, the plans show a portion of the original sidewall of the existing structure as it connects to the new addition would be re-sided with a decorative square batten siding. Staff finds that this type of siding would not be appropriate as it's not in keeping with the character of the house and would remove original features. With the condition that the unknown materials are approved by staff and that the original portion of the house retain the original clapboard appearance, staff finds that the materials of the addition would meet the design guidelines. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed addition with the condition that the additions sit in from the sides of the house before stepping back out and that the original portion of the house not be re-sided with a square batten siding. Meeting those conditions, staff finds that the addition would meet the design guidelines for Lachlan Springs. I think the applicant may agree to some conditions but not all, so they would like to speak with you and they are here today.
Any questions for Sean? Okay, thanks, Sean. Would the applicant like to come forward and just state your name and address?
My name is Thomas Smith. I live at 1625 Fatherland, of course. And we agree with the recommendations of staff with regard to the set in on the right side, but we would like to ask for a waiver of that condition on the left side. And our primary concern is that on the left back corner of the house is a bathroom that was added on sometime around 1914. And we need to keep that bathroom while construction is in process because it's going to be replaced by bathrooms in the new portion. And if we, so that bathroom's going to be enveloped in the new addition. So if there's a set in, that's going to wipe out our bathtub in that bathroom. And so we would like to request a waiver for that condition on that side. And we'd also like to point out that there are at least two houses in our immediate area that have additions that were approved recently in the last year and a half that, that on one side, it does go straight back. And so this is not really presenting a new precedence, this is just asking for a waiver, which is probably similar to the waivers that were granted to those two property owners. The addresses are 1622 and 1702 on Fatherland Street that have one side that goes straight back. And the only thing that defines the old from the new is a one-by-four board, vertical board. And that's what we're proposing for that left side. Any questions?
Real quick, and I don't know, you may be, just to make sure I understood it, Sean, you might, so the, is this the Thomas, is it the bathroom that he's referring to? Is that on this floor plan that has the Thomas on it or, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Down here.
This bathroom, okay.
Is the bathroom right by the laundry?
No, it's right by the kitchen. It's on the left. It's, it's where it says pantry, I think, right on the left, bottom left.
Yeah, that's it. It's pantry here in the, in the new, but that is pretty much the, the location of the existing rear bathroom.
So the master ba, the proposed master bathroom is, there is a bathroom existing in that location?
The proposed is part of the, I mean, the new master bathroom is back behind that, which is, is going to be, you know, in the new construction. But that's the corner of the, the little bathroom that was added in 1914. And that's going to be enveloped in, you know, that siding right there will be taken off, of course, and, and replaced with siding that will join with the rest of the addition. And if you put a notch right there, a set in, that's going to destroy my bathtub that's right there behind that wall. And we need that during the construction. After this construction is complete, that bathroom is going to be gutted from the inside and will be turned into a pantry. So it really, I feel like it consists of a hardship to put a set in right there.
So, Sean, so the drawings that we have that say original corner, that's not the, that original corner is of the, what appears to be the original house, but there's, there's an addition onto the house, an early addition, that's essentially going to remain, right?
Yes.
Well, the footprint of it is intended to remain, though it's going to be renovated into a pantry. It's currently a bathroom.
Yeah, or maybe I'm not reading the drawings right. A very short portion of it will remain and then it'll jump back out about midway through the addition. Yeah, that's correct. If you compare that floor plan, which is labeled number one on, on the attachments to page 13, the image at bottom, bottom of page 13 on the staff recommendation, that's a 1914 Sanborn map. And you can see effectively where's that, where that rear addition is, the dotted line on that 1914. And that, that is shown as what's the, the bathroom, the rear addition on this image above with the lower shed roof that ties into the back wall.
Is this where you're seeing that, right here?
If I can interject, on drawing number one, if you can find that page, it shows the bathtub and the toilet and the sink of that bathroom imposed inside where the pantry is going to be. It just gives you a reference for where that bathroom is. So if you put a notch in from the original corner, you can see that's going to take out part of my bathtub.
Sean, does he have a different drawing that we have?
Yeah, actually, they don't have the drawings that you brought in yesterday. I have two sets I can pass.
Okay.
Would it be correct to say that we're not requesting that the existing wall be set in a foot, but the addition at the point where it begins sets in a foot?
I was under, originally under the understanding that the addition, that the rear bathroom, that addition would be demolished to make way for the new addition. Because the new addition is, you'll see the, the eve and the roof line also, it's not just the wall, the eve and the roof tie into the, the rear facing gable that you see there. And, and essentially, well, not, it envelops that, that cornice, the eve line there, which is a rem... And essentially, well, it envelops that cornice, the eve line there, which is a removal of an original feature of the building, and essentially extends or extrudes that gable out to the rear. So we talked yesterday about trying to find some ways that the addition could keep the wall, but have the roof tie in so that there's still a distinction. Because otherwise, you're, since you're obliterating the rear of the house and removing any distinction of where the historic structure ends and where the new begins.
So you're looking at this picture, which is the little sought, the little lean-to rhetoric terminology. You're saying, you thought that was gone?
I would assume, well, yeah, because you can see, again, back to the floor plan, it shows that that becomes a pantry.
Yeah, oh, okay.
These, I'll pass these around. They overlay the floor plan of the new addition, what it proposes, so that bathroom will come in. I was just saying that that is a floor plan of the existing overlaid on the new, so they're showing that that pantry, or what becomes a pantry is currently the bathroom.
Kitchen, okay. So you're saying that if they did it, it'll cut it to there?
What he's saying is that what we're asking them to do is, they want to keep that bathroom during construction.
Right. They're asking.
And the bathroom turns into the pantry.
So, I'm just trying to envision what the staff intends. If, since the design essentially takes away the shed roof form, it essentially eliminates that form. It appears there might be two options in terms of meeting that condition. One would be to, and it's a sequencing issue as far as construction goes, because you need to keep the bathroom in place during construction, but if it was the last thing you did, you could then come in and offset.
You could tear it out.
Where that, yeah, tear it out, where the tub currently is. And that would be, and so you would be offsetting from the original house. Is another option to offset from the existing shed, in other words, keep the shed footprint. I don't know what happens to it vertically, but keep the shed footprint and then offset from there. Would the staff, I know you haven't seen drawings.
Mr. Smith and I talked about that yesterday and sketched some things out that would do essentially that, keep the wall and somehow use either a cricket or some sort of hyphen to bridge the old and the new. But that's not what, they didn't prefer that over what was proposed.
I'm concerned that that would cause a maintenance problem. We'd have debris piling up, and it'd be something to be constantly, you know, causing rot and so forth, moisture to build up. If you put a cricket up there to try to preserve that return cornice, and that return cornice up there is not visible from the street, you won't be able to see that from anywhere except for right beside the house there.
Let me make sure I understand too, but if you were keeping it, then the one foot would really have to be off further back then anyway, right?
Yes. If I'm understanding correctly, yes.
Yeah, no, that, yeah.
It would be up here.
Further back, we've got another gable going off to the left, and that would interfere with that.
If you're keeping it, it would be like this instead.
You're still taking what they need to do.
Yeah, this, to me, would be less desirable, to me, but then.
But eventually, that bathroom's going to go away.
Right.
Because there's another existing bathroom in the home, I mean, is that the bathroom that's off the laundry?
Yes, there is an existing bathroom there.
It's not like that's the only bathroom in the house.
It seems like it'd be, it's better to do it the way staff has recommended than if they kept the existing bathroom and made the one foot off of that. If I'm understanding this correctly.
It would be more of a change.
Yeah, it'd be more of a change. It seems like it'd be, yes, it'd be more of a change to their plan. Okay, thanks. I should probably open up public hearing.
Okay.
We're figuring it out, but thanks for sticking around and helping us understand.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an enclosed public hearing.
I have a question for staff. Is our one foot, or is it one foot, two foot offset? Is that guideline or policy?
It's a clarification of the design guidelines, which require a distinct difference between the old and the new, and to keep the massing of the addition subordinate to the primary And it's how you've handled this issue for many years.
But there could potentially be other ways to meet that guideline, I suppose. I know that's sort of a rule of thumb that we often require.
Right, it just runs the risk of changing the precedent, you said.
For clarity with the staff, and to make sure I'm reading, and I'm looking at preliminary floor plan B, there's a handwritten label in the bottom-left corner that says "original corner." Is that the 18, whenever the house was built, corner? Or is that the 1914 corner?
That is this corner that, here, with the gutter pole.
Okay, so that corresponds to that corner. And by, are, is the proposal that the 1914 addition has gained historical significance in its own right? Or is the assumption that the existing back corner of the house is from which the project starts in the view, in the analysis of staff?
Staff doesn't, staff wouldn't consider the early addition to have achieved historic significance.
Significant, okay. So in other words, the setback from there would be, that'd be where it would be considered from. And certainly, looking at the elevations, I think it'd be difficult to do it from another look.
It would be. And there have been times when an accommodation has been made for not setting in, perhaps if you're retaining a portion of an existing condition, even if it's not achieved significance. But, you know, that's, usually it's a substantial addition that really can't be removed.
Sure. And I just wanted to be clear on the purpose of this, is the return of that corne-, what we're trying to achieve is that the return of that cornice and a, that in concert with a distinction between the old and the new, those two things together, that's what we're looking to achieve here. And while the bathroom and its use to the applicant is of significance to them, that historically maybe is secondary to our consideration of, or while we sit here, I think. Very good.
Yeah, guidelines 2B-10A and 2B-10B, together, they essentially make sure that additions are not irreversible alterations of the original form, and that an addition is clearly distinguished from the historic component of the house.
And so, further clarifying then, and without respect to what the existing use in the 1914 addition is, staff's recommendation, looking at preliminary floor plan B from the original corner, or the notation with the arrow-marked original corner, would step in 12 inches from that, and then come back out flush with the house, or the more forward cross gable of the house on both sides, both the plan-labeled left and right elevations.
Yes, that would be an ideal, starting from a blank piece of paper, that's how an addition would, we'd recommend that it be started.
And that's in the recommendation summary, again, just to be clear, that's what we're requesting of the app.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so, Sean, do I understand then that the offset would essentially just, assuming it could be handled from a sequencing perspective, that it would essentially just take out a little bit of that shelving in the new pantry? Is that correct?
Yes, that's.
That they would be able to return back out to approximately where they are showing that exterior wall now?
Yeah, that pantry, I suppose, maybe that window there would have to move. But again, it's, this is kind of a theoretical addition. It doesn't exist. It, I don't know what one step would change down the line, but yeah, the shelves in the pantry could get moved over, would get moved over. We've kind of had a rule of thumb on that alcove area being twice as deep as it is in, but that's not a firm number. Sometimes more is required to make it a clear distinction. Sometimes, you know, in one, back two, just isn't enough. It would be enough, but as you said, that might create a little area where leaves collect and birds make their nests and things like that, maintenance issues.
I mean, because that, I mean, that literally is going to be like a one foot in and a one foot down, and then however many feet back out.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that condition is created because they are coming back out, which, it's an accommodation in and of itself. Ideal, again, addition would perhaps just set in and stay in, but that's not something that staff is asking for.
The theoretical addition kind of threw me there. Let me ask you one more time about this. The preliminary roof plan, two, are you saying that the setback would be on the other side of this existing flat roof with new membrane, and it would be there? Is that correct? Or is this theoretical part the one with the existing flat roof?
I give you my only copy of that, so I think I know what you're talking, but I, that was a poor choice of words. I just meant that the addition is, because it's on paper only, it's easy to, for me to imagine things moving around, but it might not be.
But it will be on this roof plane part, not the flat membrane part?
Yes, the flat roof, I believe, is that over the laundry? It's currently the laundry. That addition is, or that side of the addition is.
That stays.
A little less of a concern, because the way that the gable is shifted to one side, it's a lower slope that doesn't tie into the rear gable, the way this gable here, the addition would tie in directly into that.
Sean, the, on the left elevation, there's a dimension there that says 44-foot existing, and then there's a dashed line there. So assuming they, they changed that to lap siding, where they have the board and batten, do I understand that the applicant was proposing just a four-inch piece of trim along that, where that dashed line is? Is that essentially what they're asking for, assuming they changed to lap siding, is to provide a four-inch piece of vertical trim connecting to an existing wall to a new wall in that location? Is that correct?
Yes, I think so. This, well, where the gutter is in that, downspout is in that picture. There is a corner board, and this wall with the window is what's shown as changing to board and batten. I think in those revised plans, they show keeping that clapboard. So that, obviously, is, would be one of the conditions that staff was recommending. So if the addition just followed out, I think they would, they're proposing keeping the corner board where that, where the downspout is. Can kind of see it in that photo.
Any discussion? What do you, what do you got going on there, Ben?
I'm just, I'm trying to figure it out.
You know, this is the part of our job that drives me crazy. Sorry. I'm sure it drives Sean and Robin and other people crazy at times, too. But unfortunately, I mean, I think, you know, we can sort of figure out and plan, you know, how, what the possibilities might be, but I think when you really get up to the roof, the point of the guidelines is to be able to recognize the original structure. And so I think what's being proposed here, you're not going to be able to recognize where the original structure is, or the 19, or the early addition, either one. But, so I think the staff's recommendation is the right recommendation. And, you know, there's a sequencing issue, obviously, of keeping the bathroom in place during construction, and then once you're finished with the majority of the addition, then you can take it offline if you need to, to resolve this. Now, that said, I do want to point out to the commission that the guidelines talk about distinguishing between the historic and the addition. It's our, it's the, one of the tools, and probably the tool we've used the most, because it's easy to do that with, is the offset. Maybe there are other ways of doing that, you know, maybe there are. And so I just put that out there, because as, understanding the issue related to the bathroom, maybe there's another way that you can, and it's perhaps some of these features at the roof that would concern me more than the actual side of, you know, side of the siding itself. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do you have, okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries with staff recommendations. Okay, 517 Wilson Boulevard North.
This is an application for construction of a new outbuilding behind the house here. The outbuilding will be located at the rear of the lot.
One quick question, Paul, I'm sorry, one quick, two things. So this is still following the format, is which ones that we're presenting are the ones that are, there are questions about? Robin, okay. And did they ever, the technical people ever come back and say anything?
I thought they were working on it from the other room, but I'll double-check.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Well, it's okay. Yeah, it'd be better. Excuse me one second, Paul, we're just, we're not, it's hard to follow with.
Can you see? I can't. But at least at this.
Oh, yours doesn't work?
No, I'm looking off of yours, too. Okay, oh, okay. Well, we're just going to move.
Pardon us for one second as we shift a little bit.
Pardon us for one second as we shift a little bit. Okay, can you shift another?
Okay, sorry about that Paul. Good, yes, this is one where the applicant would like to address a couple of our conditions. The outbuilding's location meets setback requirements and the design guidelines, the overall height and scale of the structure meet the design guidelines, but the eve height of the outbuilding, drawn at 12 feet 11 inches, is not subordinate to the house, which has a 10-foot eve height at the rear, staff recommends the eve height be brought down to 10 feet or less, and that the dormer, which currently drawn, sits directly over the exterior wall beneath it, staff requests that this be moved back off of that exterior wall as well, in conclusion, with the conditions that the eve height be reduced to 10 feet or less, the dormer be moved back two feet off the wall, lap siding was not noted, that lap siding have a five-inch reveal maximum, and that staff have final approval of windows and doors, this meets the design guidelines, and the applicant is here, as I said.
So where the red arrow was, that was where you were, is that where the eve height was to move down?
That's correct.
Okay.
Question for staff quickly before the applicant comes up, it looks like in the last page of our, of the application, there's a photograph of the existing home, and I don't, that reveal on the siding appears to my eye to be perhaps larger than five inches, would matching the house in this case be appropriate, and that possibly be removed as a condition if it did match the house and that were verified in the owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks Paul, would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Hi, Paul Stanley, I'm the owner of the house at 517 North Wilson Boulevard, and love this process, I'm new to Nashville, so this is very refreshing to see something like this, I love old houses, that's why I bought this house, I understood the overlay, so my whole philosophy behind this is to keep everything as true to the neighborhood as possible, and where we're appealing is sort of the spirit of the law instead of the letter of the law, so we have the option to maintain the space above, if we lowered the eaves, we would reduce our square footage by about 25% upstairs, and we could expand the garage to 1,000 square feet per the letter of the law to achieve that with the eve height down at 10 feet, but we would prefer to keep it smaller and more compact, we think that's a better, sort of keeping in the spirit of the law and keeping the eve height there to maximize our square footage upstairs, which we did as an alternative to building onto the main house, we wanted to keep the integrity of the main house as it was, so basically appealing to the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law regarding the eve height.
Hi, I'm Emily Dyer, I'm the designer on the project, we just wanted to show a couple of things, so this is kind of where we got the design inspiration for the garage, kind of taking the same lines from the original house aside there, and they are subordinate to the house by a couple of feet there, but we just felt that kind of keeping the same slope here, you know, we don't have a porch as there is on the front of the house, that would bring the eve height down to 10 feet, and then here showing if we were to maintain the same square footage upstairs, we would need to expand the building to roughly 1,000 square feet as the footprint, which is allowable by the square footage of the lot, and that would significantly impact kind of the mass of the structure, which is not something we'd like to do, so if we could, you know, make a case for an exception here to raise the eve height to keep the footprint about 30% smaller, that would allow us to still have the usable space upstairs.
Okay, any question to the applicant?
I have a quick one on the siding, some of the photographs, could you just clarify that the siding is original to the house, or?
It is original.
Or it's not vinyl, I guess would be maybe the more direct question, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, if not, closed public hearing, discussion?
I have a question for staff, was it Sean, sorry, yeah, the lowering of the eve height you mentioned was, was a, I guess a response to the requirement or the guideline that states that outbuildings must be subordinate, eve height is one element of the building that we might measure, measure this being subordinate to, but I think there's a lot to the overall design of an outbuilding that contributes to whether it's subordinate or not, not just the eve height measured to the eve height of the house per se, footprint, just scale, massing, and so on, is there anything in the guideline that specifically states that the eaves shouldn't be lower than the, or shouldn't be higher than the eaves, or is it just a way to make it more subordinate to?
The footprint, the eve height, the ridge height, restriction zones and dormers, all of those are part of what you adopted last month, and not to step away from this case, but if it is something you feel is appropriate in this case, I'm sure that 15-4 Elmwood would like to come back on to the agenda, because it's the same issue for them, that they don't meet those requirements that were approved last month.
I think we're just getting clarification, okay, yeah, right.
Yeah, I just don't remember eve height being a part of the
It was eve height, ridge height, and square footage.
That had
That they were all part of there, and dormers and interior stairs, there were more, this is the one area where this doesn't meet those requirements, there are requirements for ridge height, eve height, square footage, how the dormers work, where the stairs are, there's more to it than just eve height.
Right, but this doesn't meet the specific
The eve height.
Eve height requirement, okay, thank you. It's a policy, I guess.
And when measuring that eve height, it's certainly viewed from the front and the back, given that this gable is, well, the eve height runs parallel to the street, which is a primary elevation, certainly on the side because of the depth of the house, the ridge height gets up tall, how does the ridge height of the applicant's proposal compare with the house?
The ridge height is, I think, two feet less than that of the house.
Okay.
Do you mind going back to your arrow one again for me, just real quick?
I'm struggling with this a little bit, because, I mean, I think the, I feel like the applicant makes something a convincing case, that they're not seeking the maximum, they're wanting to minimize this, I know that doesn't speak to the guidelines that we've approved and may carry no weight at all, but in looking at the project as a whole, does it get better when the footprint gets larger, I think having that usable space upstairs, that's, by right, it's not granted, actually, well, I guess with policy now, by right, it is granted as an outbuilding and with a second story, I just wonder what makes for a better project in total, making it wider and more squat, is it, and taller, is it better, I'm wrestling with that one, as it conflicts possibly with our guidelines that we've just approved.
Remember, we didn't approve guidelines, we approved italicized language, right, which is guidance to us, you know, I think, unless I'm wrong, and I know there's, I know there's, the staff likes, you know, one of the reasons we did that is to give the staff guidance and to give applicants guidance, but I think the intent of all those, or most of those elements, footprint, height, eve height, all of those were intended to meet the guideline to make the outbuilding subordinate to the existing house, I'm not sure this as designed isn't subordinate, I mean, it feels like a good scale, it feels like, it may not meet the letter of the law, of the, of these, of the policies we approved last month, but as a whole, it feels, I mean, like it meets the guidelines itself, which says the building should be subordinate to, and I think, I don't think we should be measuring subordinates by any single dimension or element, it's the, it's the overall design, so I'm fearful that perhaps one that met the letter of the law might actually be less subordinate than this.
I'd like to add one thing, the applicant asked earlier about the dormers, if reducing the size of the dormer, if they could do one on both roof planes as well.
Sorry?
The condition on the dormers, that the dormer be moved back, I didn't mention it earlier, but they asked me if they could add a dormer to the other roof, other side as well, if they reduce that dormer two feet, if they could then add one, and I think that does meet the guidelines if they wanted to do that.
It does.
I think the other point I'd like to make about the eve is, you know, this style of house has a very low slung eve, you know, but that, again, the eve of the house doesn't necessarily define the scale of the house, so the 10-foot height on an eve is, you know, really low relative to so many of, you know, so many other homes, I suspect, in the neighborhood.
It's a one and a half story house, and you have a corresponding one and a half story garage with a ridge height that's two feet less, when viewed, not in elevation, but obliquely, the porch roof and rack is down, you can't even see the head of the windows at the porch, and in the middle of the house, it's, you know, the mass of it certainly grows, and I don't, this is, it's unique to this house, and this outbuilding is unique to this lot and this house as well, I don't know if the right thing to do is, that it's fine, but that's, again, that's what I'm struggling, wrestling with in terms of this versus the letter of our recently approved guideline, recently approved
I think it's a little bit hard to, if we look at the letter of the law, it's easy to turn this down, as staff has recommended, as they probably should, and what's a little bit hard to tell is, is it subordinate to, we don't really have drawings that show, or photographs that are, you know, to scale, that are, you know, that really help us see whether this is subordinate.
Sometimes we look at slopes and everything, and this one was probably flat, but
Right, you know, sort of in a vacuum, as a single elevation, to me, this feels like it's likely subordinate to, despite the eve height, because it's a relatively small footprint and a lower
Is there any kind of drawing that shows that at all, that would be really helpful, you're right, because then you could really kind of compare that eve with how it really
And the comment about having it subordinate to the primary dwelling, how many feet is it from the main dwelling? It's more than 20 foot, right? It's more than 20 foot?
It is.
So, and how much taller is the outbuilding than the main building?
The outbuilding will not be taller than the main building.
So it's still subordinate?
That's correct, in ridge height, it is, the eve height is about 12 feet 11 inches compared to, I mean, at the rear eve of the house is 10 feet, so that's that measurement and the distance from the house.
It's right here, Paul.
65 feet, okay.
And again, being further away from the main dwelling, it doesn't seem to be more reflected that it would be not subordinate.
I understand what both commissioners are saying, my concern is that, well, I guess, the main concern is, once we make that decision, I don't, we're setting ourselves up to evaluate each and every one of these, because we have just passed some new guidelines.
We, if I, excuse me for interrupting, we haven't passed new guidelines, and that's a, needs to be, I think it's really important, because we haven't gone through a public process, we haven't asked the public for their, you know, input on that, it's to help us understand and help us have tools to, let the staff and the public
I understand.
Create more predictability.
I understand, but I mean, you know, we are, we will be doing a lot of this, which I understand, but the main concern that I have, I think I would be willing to compromise the eve height, but I feel very strongly about dormers, since the dormers have been issues that we have dealt with over and over and over again, not necessarily on outbuildings, but that's sort of my position on where we stand on this one.
And Anna, I share your caution, and, you know, it makes me want to, you know, see more information that can help us determine whether, you know, whether this is, you know, whether our, our theory here is correct or not, and I think it will help us too down the road to know that those general guidelines still need to be looked at on a case by case basis, so
One quick thing, one last shot, could you go back to that arrow one more time, I guess I'm infatuated with that arrow shot, but the red one, the red arrow, yeah, I guess you can't just increase, have a overhang a little further out, could you, you still couldn't get to 10, be right down here for 10.
More overhang.
You know, the position of the dormer?
No, the dormer, I'm kind of with you on the dormer, I was just trying to get the overhang differently, and I was just thinking, like, if you had more of an overhang similar to the front, if you had something like that on the side, but I don't, you still couldn't get to 10, no, but it would be less than the, it would still be lower than the transition on the, one last thing, go to the orange arrows one more time for me.
The, which, in their presentation?
The orange arrows, yeah, in their presentation, oh, is that, I'm sorry, that's what
Yeah, they made the room.
Okay. Because this is on the front, but that could be on the side, you know, that would give it
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you guys follow what I'm saying, like, if you had more of a, if the overhang on the side was similar more to the overhang on the sides on the existing building, you get a little bit more, you wouldn't get to 10, but it could be less.
Yeah, there may be tools that can get that eve height down, that might be more consistent with the existing architecture, because if you look at the Because if you look at the low eve, albeit it's on the front and the back, not the side, but they're very deep eves.
Yeah.
And that would drop that down even more, maybe make it more consistent with the existing house.
Is that a question for the applicant, sir?
Sure.
I think that's, yeah, sure, I would be interested in knowing if the applicant, if they would consider.
More overhang.
Yeah, more overhang, more consistent with, with the existing buildings, or the existing building, in order to lower the eve height. I don't know how much exactly.
I have no problem with that, as long as it doesn't get in the way of the offset from the property line.
Right, because you're five feet, yeah. I think eves can go over them, yeah.
Okay. I think, I think we could get to something that would be a little bit more getting that eve height down. Don't you guys?
Yeah, I mean, the only other option is, you know, if, if we turned it down, they could bring this back next month with more drawings that illustrate how this design, maybe with more overhang, is subordinate to the existing structure, perhaps, right? I mean, and they wouldn't have to pay another fee, or, you know. So that's one option is to, you know.
Well, certainly, we've given them lots of guidance and where we're standing, although we're not, and we don't want to imply that what they come back with, we'll just put a rubber stamp on it.
Yeah.
But y'all are more designers than I am, but I do feel that we sit here and try to redesign it for them, that we need to give them guidance if we're going to turn it down, or some concessions if we're going to accept it.
I think around along the lines, pretty good guidance to get better at it. Or we just make the recommendations with approval.
Well, if we turn it down, they always have the option to come back and meet all of the regulations as they're, you know, specifically as they've been defined. And they're, they could, you know. But I think the conversation we've had already perhaps gives them enough guidance to.
To do it.
Yeah.
One last thing that you guys could, go ahead, Ben.
To the extent of widening the eve, I think at best, you might hope to get to 12 feet.
Because it would go too far.
Rather than delay the applicant another month. I mean, I just think, looking at it, 12 feet's, you know, is 12 feet going to be different enough to the commission that 12 feet 11 is now? If so, we can make that stipulation, and they'll figure it out. If that's what's holding us up, I think if we can come to some conclusion about feelings on the other conditions, I would encourage us as a body to move along.
So we could give them more information as we have been on number one, and just, it seems like we are pretty set on two and three.
I.
Do you agree?
You want to craft a motion and see how it flies.
Are they not asking for another dormer as well?
Well, they can have it.
Not in this proposal.
Not in this proposal.
All right. Anybody want to take a shot at it? So we're basically saying, well, I can't tell you what you want to say.
I'm not saying what we have to say, but, you know, if we're talking about a difference of 11 inches a month to the applicant for 11, you know, how different is that going to be? And I know we would like some more information about the house and the comparison of two, and I don't, delaying, delaying a decision will be the same decision a month from now.
Well, let's see what happens.
Yeah.
I'll, I believe that despite some of the more prescriptive guidance policies that we put in place last month, I think this design does meet the guidelines and is subordinate to the existing house, and would recommend we approve with the staff's conditions, with the exception of number one, which the eve height shall be reduced to 12 feet or less.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Point and discussion.
Just because, I'd like, just for the record, in terms of considering mass, that the ridge of the outbuilding is at least two feet less than the ridge of the house, and that when you look at the house in the third dimension, obliquely, that kind of the center portion of the cross gable and this, as compared to each other, certainly are, I think are compatible, and that one reads in the third dimension certainly is subordinate to the other.
Supporting.
Supporting, just for clarity's sake, in.
So it's in the record?
Yeah, on the record.
Okay. Thanks, Ben. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1410 Lillian Street, and Mr. T. has recused himself still?
I'm going to abstain on this.
Abstain, okay.
No, I'm sorry, this is not the one I'm abstaining.
This is not the one?
No. It's the other Lillian Street.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
1410 Lillian Street is an application for infill construction of a two-family residence. This is one where the applicant has agreed to all conditions that we mentioned, so I will forego the presentation if there are any questions.
Okay, great. Okay, would the motion, would the applicant like to come forward and just state that you have agreed to go on with staff recommendations?
I'm Van Pond, I'm the applicant for this project. Yes, we agree to all staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Hearing discussion?
Move, we approve staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, 404 South 16th Street.
This is another project where the applicant has agreed to all the staff recommendations and has already submitted revised drawings, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Would the applicant come forward and just state your agree to all the recommendations?
Yes, I'm Lynn Taylor, and I'm applicant with Drew here. He's a property owner.
Oh, yeah, we've been working with historic since the beginning of this project and are happy to continue working and meet the recommendations they've suggested.
You, I don't think you have the latest, what we, I turned them in late this morning, so Robin has them though.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing.
Do you adopt staff's recommendation?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 404 South 16th Street is approved.
I didn't vote out. I do vote in favor of that. I was not audible.
Okay.
But I do vote in favor of staff's recommendation.
Thank you, dear. Okay, 1010 Granada Court.
1010 Granada Court is another one where the applicant agrees to our conditions that we requested, and staff recommends its approval.
Okay, thank you. Would applicant, is applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Same group?
I'm Lynn Taylor, again. They had a couple of changes on it, and we've already submitted that to Paul, so we're okay with everything.
Okay. All right, thanks, Lynn. Okay, open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing.
Do you adopt staff's recommendation?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 318 51st Avenue North.
I'm going to present this, this application. This, 318 51st Avenue North, in Parkin Elkins Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, is an application to construct a new house on a vacant lot. A non-contributing house was recently demolished from the lot with staff approval. The new house will be one and one-half stories tall, consistent with the heights of surrounding historic houses. However, staff finds that the proposed width of the new structure at 36 feet would be wider than is typical of historic houses nearby, the majority of which are between 26 to 32 feet wide. There is a house on the south end of the same block that is 36 feet wide, that's the top-left picture there, but that house is on a wider lot than the average lot for the block, and staff finds that that's not indicative of the scale of houses nearby. Staff did find that the materials that are known for the new building, cement fiber siding, asphalt shingle roof, et cetera, meet the applicable design guidelines, it's explained in your staff recommendation. The window proportion rhythm is appropriate, the windows and doors would need to be approved by staff. It has a side gabled, primary roof is side gabled with a pair of gabled dormers on front, and both of those dormers are set in from the first-story walls, as is typical, a typical requirement for new construction. The house is very similar in form to that of a Craftsman bungalow, which is a historic common house type. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed new construction at 3831851st Avenue North, with the condition that the width is reduced to 33 feet, and that the windows, doors, and roof color are approved by staff. Otherwise, staff finds this to meet the Parkin Elkins design guidelines.
Okay.
And there is an applicant here who may answer any questions you might have. I can answer questions too.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question for staff. It appear, on the right and left elevations, as presented, there's no skirt board at the transition from block to, it just seems like a lot of clappard and a kind of thin cap at the roof as drawn. It doesn't call out dimensions on, it's just a, it's really wide. Would you typically not see something a little deeper for the ridge boards that are running up at the eve? And in looking at the elevation, that strikes me as just a lot of cloud.
You're right, without the proportions, if that's just a four-inch fascia, that might not be sufficient, and the water table is a good suggestion as well. It's something that could be added as, as conditions.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
John Zelenek, I'm the designer and the builder, and as far as the width of the structure, I do, I do see the point of the other homes on 50-foot lots are 33 feet wide, but as Sean pointed out, there is a 36-foot wide house on a wider lot, and this lot is 50, but there is a 25-foot sewer and stormwater easement on the north property line. So there is more green space between this home and the home immediately to the north, which would, you know, which would appear from a streetscape standpoint that there, that this, you know, potentially looks like a wider lot than it actually is. And, you know, maybe we could, right now, we have the 36-foot home centered in the 40-foot wide building envelope. Maybe we could slide the home north to the five-foot setback on the north side of the property, which would give us more space between this, our home and the home to the south, and we still have that 25-foot easement between our home and the home to the north, which with setbacks would give us about 35 feet between those homes.
So you're, you're saying to keep the width, but just to reposition it on the side?
Yeah, we could slide the home towards the 25-foot easement on the north property line to create a few more feet of distance between the home to the south, and we still would have about 35 feet or more between our home and the home to the north because of that easement.
Okay. And I guess you'd looked at making it smaller, just, that would just change what you're.
I have, it would compromise some of the room sizes in the home, and we are right at the edge of the overlay. The overlay stops at 51st Avenue, and there are already some new homes constructed across the street, and potentially in the future, there will be some tear downs there that will not have to comply with the historic overlay, and I feel like they're probably going to be built as wide as the lot will allow. So I think it will kind of stay in keeping with that street as it progresses.
Okay. Any questions, any more questions from the applicant?
A couple of, these are a couple of, might be viewed as nitpicky, but there are things we've, that have been constructed before that kind of in retrospect have, and this one in particular, is typically on a home you would see on the front porch columns, where I think there's a stone veneer shown, that the base of the cap, the base of the column and its cap is bigger than the column that sits on top of. If you're in fact going to do stone there, you know, if you've got wood that comes all the way down, that's, that's less common, but that, we've had situations where, you know, we're dimensioning a nice, what wants to be a nice big bungalow-style fat column base is driven by, you know, a 16 by 16 dimension on block, and then you stick stone around it, and it just looks a little funky at the end of the day.
Okay.
That, you make sure you pay attention to those kinds of details, and that, especially since that's the front elevation that that one is pulled off. And also having a water table or a skirt board in the transition between block and the siding on the house just tends to create a nice base for it to sit upon. In what's drawn, what is the, at the eve, what is the depth of, is it like a hardy, piece of hardy trim that runs on the left and right elevation up? Do you know what the dimension of that would be, or what you typically specify?
It more than likely is a 1 by 8 fascia. We could do, we could do kind of a freeze board as well below that, below the overhang, and I do agree with the skirt board down at the bottom, and potentially even doing a, doing a, maybe an eight or 12-inch transition at the, at the second floor floor system as well, to kind of break up all that siding.
Very well. Thank you.
Any more questions for, okay, thanks, John. This is John, yeah. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Closed public hearing, discussion?
A question for staff is the, I'm a little confused by the, I guess it's from Metro Maps, the vicinity map. Is there a, is that actually an alley right of way that's never been improved?
That's how I was reading the map. Yeah, and it does have a numbered alley to the, on the northern edge of this property.
Okay.
And I guess it also does have a sewer easement in there as well.
But it looks like the alley.
I guess the property line here is, is the fence, and then the chain link fence, between the chain link and the wooden fence of the next house would be that, that alley that is grown over with grass.
Well, I think it, you know, it's pretty compelling that, you know, I mean, the house design is nice, it seems right scale and fits in, there's other examples very similar to it on larger lots, and it's pretty compelling with, with that easement through there, that it's going to feel like it's on a larger lot. Now, if the city ever comes back and improves that alley, it won't, but, how often does that happen?
What is, how does everybody feel about repositioning it?
What is, how does everybody feel about repositioning it?
Just looking at the, the house that was there before, it looks like it's not centered on the lot either. If you look at that fanborn mound or the aerial mound.
Well, it's centered on the lot. It's just that that's the easement and the alley.
Right. I mean, that was the house built before. So it's also offset and not centered on the lot, right? Am I, am I looking at that right?
Well, these maps aren't super accurate, but it's certainly not unusual to see homes shifted to one side, often had a driveway down the side or...
And that's what he's asking for.
Well, he's asking to use the perception of this alley.
Yeah, push it toward the alley to the five-foot setback, which he's allowed to place it there anyways. Would the staff be opposed to that placement on the lot?
It could move two feet to the north without requiring a setback notification.
And do you all have any concerns about repositioning it on the lot?
I don't.
Okay.
Okay. You're nodding. Okay. Do we get a motion?
I'll move approval with staff recommendations with the exception that the width of the house, width of the house as presented is acceptable pending submission of a site plan that moves at the edge of the house onto the minimum five-foot side setback adjacent to the, the alley and/or sewer easement on the, what's that, the?
North.
North side of the, of the lot. And also, too, that the applicants submit elevation drawings that add a skirtboard on appropriate elevations, particularly the right and the left, and then how that coordinates with the front and the rear elevations. And that there'd be a minimum 1-by-10 fascia at the eve of the right and left elevations.
Clarification on that, Ben. Is that 36-foot? Are you talking about, your first sentence, 36-foot?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next one is 3109 Ackland Avenue.
3109 Ackland Avenue. This is an application for construction of two new homes, two reestablished lots here where this non-contributing building has been approved for demolition by staff. This is another case where the applicant has agreed with all conditions.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant please come forward and just state your name and your acceptance of the recommendations?
Hello, my name is Ben Whitehouse. I'm the property owner for this property, and I agree with all the staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, close public hearing.
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 3109 Ackland Avenue. So next is 406 AMB Rudolph Avenue.
406 Rudolph. This is an application for construction of two new residences on these vacant lots. They're 30-foot lots, seen here on the vacant lot, two lots there. This is another one where the applicant, David, has agreed to our conditions, and we will be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Would the applicant come forward and state your name and address and acceptance of the recommendations?
I'm David Baird, the applicant. We agree with all the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. Just wanted to speak on this one really briefly. For the last couple of commission hearings, we had a discussion about a similar situation where we had narrow lots and how appropriate of a height house should be located on those lots. And I think that that discussion that we had about that 2002 Eastland project was very instructive to both of our neighborhoods to learn what the commissioners felt was acceptable and what our expectations would be. And I know yesterday I had an opportunity to speak with Elizabeth Smith, who's the president of the Lockland Springs Neighborhood Association where this is located. And in light of our experience with that, we both appreciate that the applicant in this case has worked with narrow lots but has produced some structures that are within an acceptable height range, they felt, for their neighborhood in Lockland Springs. And under the circumstances, they also really appreciate the fact that it's a fairly traditional design, and they think that that will help to blend in with their neighborhood certainly better than the structures immediately to the north, which are kind of pictured there. So without officially speaking on behalf of Lockland Springs, I just wanted to reiterate our appreciation of our, from our neighborhoods, that when we have very narrow lots, that applicants bring forward structures that are very, very similar and not maxing out the height range of the historic structures nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, close public hearing. Motion discussion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 406 AMB Rudolph are approved. 1511 Lilian Street. I think this is the one, right? Is this the right Lilian for you?
Yes, I will be abstaining on this.
All right.
Sorry, that's the case that got pulled. There we go. 1511 Lilian Street is another application for a new construction on a vacant lot. It is another case where staff is recommending approval with conditions, and the applicant, as far as I know, agrees to all the conditions. And so again, staff recommends approval and with those conditions and the staff recommendation, if you have any questions, the applicant or I can try to answer them.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Now, applicant, please come forward and state your name and acceptance of the recommendations.
Hi, my name is Mona Hodge. Sorry, I'm a little sick. I am the designer and owner of the property along with my husband Nigel Hodge, and we approve all staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, close public hearing. Have a motion?
Move approval with staff's recommendation.
Have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, 15 Lilian Street is approved.
One abstention.
Oh, and one abstention. Thanks. 1907 Benjamin Street.
1907 Benjamin Street. I'll go ahead and present the overview because there are a couple of things to talk about. This is an application for construction of a new residence on vacant lot. The proposed structure is within the range of the context as far as height. The width is pushing the range of homes nearby, about one foot wider. But the lot is irregularly shaped, and that was our justification for the extra foot of width. The proposal also meets the design guidelines for materials orientation utilities. On the north elevation here, staff has requested that the wall dormer be redesigned to a roof dormer. And to meet the guidelines for openings, staff has recommended that a window be added in the shaded area there, which is currently 16 feet without an opening. Here, I want to note an error in the staff recommendation. I wrote in the section on orientation that the walkway to the house from Benjamin Street would be in this approximate location of this curb cut. The curb cut is actually in the adjacent property, so I wanted to acknowledge that, that error. The walkway will be about 20 feet to the left of what you see here. The house meets design guidelines for setbacks and rhythm of spacing. The outbuilding meets the design guidelines for everything except location. In the section on setbacks and site requirements, that there should be 20 feet between the principal structure and an outbuilding. And currently, the outbuilding is about five feet from the house. The presence of a sewer easement at the rear of the lot does restrict the possible locations for an outbuilding, and the applicant would like to discuss that with you. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the new construction with the conditions of finished floor height consistent with that of adjacent historic homes, staff approval of windows, doors, and a sample of the brick, window be added to the north elevation, the dormer on the north elevation be redesigned as a roof dormer, and that the outbuilding be relocated to be no closer than 20 feet to the house.
So, Paul, on the drawing, on the drawing we're looking at, you're saying that the proposed garage, that pinch point there, that's where you're saying the 20 feet, right there?
Well, currently, the distance between the outbuilding and the house is, is five feet. But the, at the left of the, the site plan there is a, an easement for, I'm actually not sure what the water line is, stormwater, sewer. So that, that does make their choice of where to build an outbuilding problematic. But to meet the guidelines, five feet is too close.
Okay, any question, any more questions for Paul? Okay, thanks. Would applicant like to come forward and speak about this?
Hello again. My name's Van Pond. I'm the architect representing the owner for this project. I wanted to make, I want to be very clear about something. When we're talking about guidelines, as Paul emailed me on Friday when I got the recommendation on this as well, so we've kind of jumped around a little bit. The 20-foot distance is not part of the guidelines, it's part of the clarifications, the italicized text, as I understand that. Is that correct, Paul?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. That being said, I have these, there's plenty, and they're not my only copy. So there's, we will accept staff's recommendations on the main structure. Moving the garage 20 feet away from the main structure is actually not possible in any way, shape, form, or fashion. Because the, you'll see on the plan, it's oriented the same way this is. On the left-hand side of the plan is an access easement for 303 Manchester Avenue, which must be maintained. Clear, we cannot build on that. What I'm giving, what I've given you are proposed alternate site plans, which slightly make the garage smaller and move it to 10 feet away from the main structure. My client would prefer to look at what is labeled Option B and ask that you grant us a variance based on that. And that would require that we reduce the setback of the face of the load face of the garage, the garage door face, from the alley to five feet. The alley's quite wide. The illustration does show you where the alley drive is, so there's actually room to back out. We're not constricting or making that garage unusable. Other than that, I'm open to answering questions you may have about this. It's a very interesting lot. There's a lot of constraints.
So for clarity, your, your client prefers Option B over C. The application is for A, and that would be most desirable?
Most desirable is how we have it. We could possibly move that a little bit further away. But again, we start running into load-in from the rear issues. We need to have enough room to turn a car in.
Sure. In, out of curiosity, in Option A, is there a, is the depiction in the site plan of the amount of right-of-way that the alley, that there's a considerable amount of right-of-way unused at the alley presently?
That is per the survey, and we did, the survey does actually locate the opposite side of the alley. I've got that if you'd like to see it.
I, I'm wondering if coming tighter to the property line is, because you're not loading out that way, is that, that would be...
Well, we're, we're at three feet on this one.
That's what, this one represents three feet.
The primary that we submitted is three feet from the property line. Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks, Van. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project?
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. I'm Brett Withers. I live at 1113 Granada Avenue. I am the neighborhood representative for Eastwood. As Van had mentioned, this is a, is a unique lot. It was recently subdivided out. There were two adjacent parcels at 301 and 3 Manchester that were very, very deep lots. And the applicant, well, the development company worked with those two properties to subdivide out the back portion of those and to combine it into one lot, which was, that lot subdivision was accepted by the historic staff as being one that could potentially accommodate a contributing structure or structure that met the design guidelines. However, for 303 Manchester, which is further away from Benjamin, there is an access easement off the rear, and that will be their only means of access to their property. And so that does have to be maintained. So given the unusual dimension of the lot, as well as that rear easement, it does make sense to a lot of the neighbors that, that the garage would be placed a little bit closer to the property, as you would see, as opposed to being at the far-back corner. One other thing I would like to mention as well is that when one comes down Benjamin Street going to the east along this line, there is actually, is a lot of visibility down the alley from Benjamin. And so one of the things that the neighbors like about this design is that it, instead of having a huge garage door facing the alley, it's kind of turned away. So it presents a much better aesthetic view or perspective for folks who are coming down Benjamin. So the design itself, neighbors really love. They love the way that massing is broken up. And the property owners that I've spoken to are accepting of the proposed site plan, which has the outbuilding closer to the, the structure than would ordinarily be the case. I think that the, the design aesthetic of the building itself makes it look not like a utilitarian garage, but almost like a small cottage in and of itself. And so it's just a really, it's a unique project on a unique lot. And our neighbors that I've spoken to are accepting of the site plan as presented and would encourage you to accept it as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who'd like to speak regarding this project? Okay, close public hearing, discussion?
I think given the supporting cast or, you know, the neighborhood's support of this project, and I think brings up a good point in that I'm not familiar with, with this particular stretch of Benjamin or this stretch of Nashville. And certainly, I would think the neighborhood folks that have spoken to the neighborhood representative would be more so than I would, that, that the garage door facing, not facing the alley, but facing the back is certainly an improvement. And given that and the other constraints on the lot with the easement, and I think if there is a unique case, this certainly meets, in my mind, meets, meets the qualifications for being a uniquely shaped lot and having some unique constraints to it. I move approval with staff's recommendation, accepting Item 5, that the outbuilding be relocated, that that be deleted from, from the conditions of approval, and that the site plan as presented is approved.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. I've submitted with admitting number five. Okay, 1727 Fourth Avenue North.
1727 and 1729 Fourth Avenue are essentially the same building. Both of these, the applicant has agreed to the conditions, so we will not be presenting unless there's any questions.
Okay, great. Would the applicant just come forward and say that you, just for the record, I'm sorry, yeah, just for the record, just say you're for, you're, you agree with all the recommendations?
My name is John Root. I'm the architect for the projects, and we, we agree with all the recommendations of staff.
Okay, thanks. Okay, public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, close public hearing. Motion?
Motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries for...
Was your motion for both projects?
For 1727 Fourth Avenue North and 1729 Fourth Avenue North. All right, so we're ready for 1304 Fourth Avenue North and 1309 Third Avenue North.
All right, so we're ready for 1304 Fourth Avenue North and 1309 Third Avenue North.
This project is to construct a multifamily complex with minimal commercial that is located adjacent to the National Register of Historic District's boundaries. At this time, the applicant is seeking approval of just the massing and the layout of the project, and if approved, will return for final approval of the details of the project. Although the development abuts historic context, generally, the commission has used the guidelines for properties outside of historic context when they are outside of the National Register boundaries, which this one is. The project includes demolition of all buildings and appurtenances on these two lots. All of that is modern, and so that meets the design guidelines. The site layout setbacks, orientation, meet the design guidelines. Typically, new construction within the central portion of the district should be no more than three stories or essentially 35 feet tall. The design guidelines allow for additional, for additional height on Third Avenue North because it's an arterial street passing through the eastern part of the district, connecting downtown to Metro Center, and for additional height where there is little historic context. For large lots, the massing should be mitigated, and this is accomplished by keeping the development at four stories along Fourth Avenue North, which is approximately 45 feet from grade, and bringing the development down to three stories, approximately 31 feet from grade, as it transitions towards the borders of the National Register District. On Third Avenue North, the project is primarily five stories on Monroe Street and then wrapping around Third Avenue, which is appropriate because four to six stories are possible for portions of Third Avenue just across Third Avenue. The massing is mitigated by pushing back the fifth level in the middle of the project, facing Third Avenue North and transitioning down to three stories as the project approaches two historic buildings just outside of the National Register boundary. Staff recommends approval, again, just of the massing and of demolition of existing buildings and structures, finding this action to meet the design guidelines for appropriate demolition. Staff recommends approval of a recommendation to the planning commission of the massing, finding that the project meets the design guidelines for new construction within an area with little historic context, and with the understanding that the applicant will return for final approval of facade articulation and all details of the project, and the applicant is here.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead. I don't have a question. I would like for the, to let the record reflect that at staff's recommendation, I have met on several occasions with staff and president and the applicant to try to work through the detail, or some of the massing details of this project, but I don't think that previously discussing or analyzing it will compromise my reviewing it today. Okay, thank you. Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak regarding this project?
Sure thing. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm the applicant, Chris Benish, with Price Development Group, 104 West Ninth Street, Kansas City, Missouri. With me this afternoon, I have my managing partner, Monty Wendler, also Kansas City. I want to reach out and thank staff, Public Works, planning staff as well, Council Lady Gilmore, and the Commissioners for their time and assistance over the course of many months. We've worked diligently to reach a consensus on the style and design of this project, and I think that could be seen in our proposed plan and in the staff report. Price Development Group is a third-generation family business based in Kansas City. We have about 12,000 multifamily units predominantly in Kansas City and Texas. This is our first venture, development venture into Metro Nashville. We hope it's one of many Metro Nashville. We're excited about this project. We're excited about this location. We're excited to be part of this neighborhood. The existing 2.75 acre site, today contains one-story nondescript industrial buildings. In its current condition, it's really little benefit to the neighborhood or to the city given the level of investment and change we're seeing in the surrounding areas. Current zoning of the site is industrial, restrictive, with an urban overlay zoning and historic overlay zoning. No part of the project, as mentioned, is classified as contributing elements of the historic district. We have gone through our second reading of our SP rezoning and received support. Our third reading was scheduled for last night. We actually asked for a deferral on that so that we could attend the meeting this afternoon. If I could bring up to you a little bit of the process of how we've gotten to where we are. As I mentioned, we've met with staff and numerous stakeholders for many months. In fact, seven months ago, we sat down with staff, MHCC staff, as long as, as well as Public Works and planning staff. At that time, presented a completely different plan. At that time, we had a complete five-story structure across both lots there. We were actually closing the alley, proposed closing the alley that bisects the site. And what we heard, what the response was, was pull back from the streets on Fourth and Third, increase the side lot setbacks, step down as we went north into the neighborhood, energize the corners at Fourth and Third, maintain the alley and maintaining the alley, add access to a parking garage and services off the alley, increase the sidewalk widths on Fourth and Third to be more in line with what's happening to the north and even along Monroe. And then also, the other thing was to add parking and look at the addition of parking along Third. Currently, parking on Third is after 5:00. They were looking for a full-time parking there, which required additional right-of-way dedication. Next 60 days or so, we worked with staff, both Public Works, planning, and MHCC staff. June and July, had additional meetings, came back, represented our plan, and what we heard at that time, historic comments were elevations in blocks felt good, felt that it had the right rhythm, the right style, right design of the pattern in the neighborhood there. Still felt that our setbacks on the north were actually a little too wide, a little too generous there, so we've actually looked at that again. And they wanted to see more of a transition down into the north. Public Works and planning were comfortable with the plan at that time, so really, our focus then was to reengage over the months of August and September with staff and with Commissioner Mosley, as you mentioned here, to refine this plan and really try to get it right here. It results in additional redesign, and in the end, I think the project transformations have ever really helped. What we've done is we have maintained the alley and the street rhythm associated with the alley. We've also added the services off of the alley, trash recycling, et cetera, all off of the alley, garage access off the alley as well. We've stepped down the building height when it crossed from historic structures and a transition into the neighborhood north. We have increased the sidewalk width, so additional step-back and setbacks along Fourth, Third, and Monroe, so increased our sidewalk widths. We added the parking and dedicated the additional right-of-way along Third, and we shifted height within the project so it could be sensitive to the neighborhood conditions. Now, these enhancements have led to good design, and we felt that the plan was consistent with the context and development pattern of the neighborhood. At that time, because of how we felt and the conversations we've had with staff and others, we went out and met with neighborhood, neighborhood business owners and the neighborhood organization. Now, I know height is a big question at hand here, and height specifically as it relates to the project and our parcel there, and height on the plan there. If I may, just kind of contextually set it up and why we decided where height is where it is. As we know, and as mentioned, the eastern boundary being Third Avenue there, as stated in the guidelines, is an arterial boulevard where taller heights and densities may be appropriate. As you can see in our plan, it shifts from five stories at Monroe down to four, down to three along Third there. Also, as mentioned, T4MU guidelines state, which is a parcel south and at the eastern side of our, of our project here, structural heights to the south of the subject parcel and along Third Avenue are identified to have a maximum height of four to six stories, but no taller than 75 feet. Now, looking at the guidelines, and specifically Section 325, it states that new buildings shall be constructed to a height that is compatible with adjacent context, and consideration of the physical characteristics of a property will be given in determining compatible heights, with lot size being one of those considerations. I think we can all agree that the project itself, it sits on the edge, eastern and southern boundary of the historic overlay. Predominantly, adjacent uses are commercial. The site is a large site, 2.75 acre site. It's a large site in the area there. So if we look further at the guidelines, it goes on to state that in the absence of adjacent historic context, structures are permitted to be three stories or 45 feet in height. This site, and specifically the four-story structure portion, is absent of adjacent historic structures and maintains separation of adjacent uses because of the street separations. Fourth Avenue on the Fourth Avenue side, Third Avenue on the Third Avenue side. We have that separation there. Where we have adjacent historic structures, we do step the building down to three stories. On height itself, I think it's important to look what else is happening in the area there, specifically at the intersection of Fourth and Monroe. Caddy corner from us, great mixed-use development there, ground floor pizza shop, 312 Pizza Shop there, taller floor plates, and then two stories of residential above that and then a roof element. I don't know the exact height on that, if I were to eyeball it, 38, 39 feet, 40 feet tall, something along those lines. Moving further west down Monroe, brand-new townhomes there, three-story townhomes, gable roofs with dormers, three stories of residential and a gable roof and a dormer. Little bit higher than what's at the corner, probably closer to that 40, 40-plus types, type height there. Now, I'm not here to say that these are on the same height or plane as our proposed four-story, but contextually, my roof line is really not completely out of line with what's happening at the, at the intersection there. Now, I'm looking at the three-story or 45-foot language of the guidelines, I think, I think it's important to point out that if we were constructing a mixed-use project, a mixed-use ground floor retail and office project, our first floor plate could possibly be 14, 15, or even higher, first floor, and then second and third could be, you know, 11, 12 foot. So that would be a three-story structure, would be closer to that 45-foot height there. Our, my project's taller elements are in areas where there's no adjacent historic context, they're within the 45-feet height, but we do have four stories. Now, in closing, with the enhancements we've done in terms of design, the arterial roadway to the east, the opportunity for development of 75 feet to the south, in the context of the new development with the mixed-use caddy corner and further down Monroe, plus the lack of the adjacent historic structures, I feel we have a project, as does the staff report, that satisfies the grading, planning ideals of the MHCC Germantown overlay guidelines. This project contextually transitions into the neighborhood, is in character with the existing development pattern of the neighborhood, street condition, and adjacent uses. So this evening, we are asking for your support in approving the demolition of the existing buildings and the approval of the massing of the orientation. We do recognize we need to return for final facade articulation approval. With that, thank you very much for your time.
One second. Is there any questions of the applicant? After we get into it, there may be later, but thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Maybe we'll start off with people who are, want to speak, did we do against last time? Start first?
Either direction.
Either direction, okay. We'll start off with against project. Anyone like to speak against the project? If you'd come forward and state your name and address.
This weather is doing me in. My name is Michael Emmerich. I live at 1229 Sixth Avenue North in Germantown. I'm on the Neighborhood Association Board of Directors and Chair of the Development and Streetscape Committees, and am representing the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association in what I'm about to say, and I've written it out so that I don't ramble, because several of you know me. We're here to take exception with the staff recommendation on Page 8 with respect to the height and massing orientation on the Fourth Avenue side of this project. Needless to say, the demolition aspect of this brought dancing to the streets. More than happy to see the Formosa property go away. But, the Price Development Group did a presentation to the neighborhood on November 3rd, a board meeting, at which site plans and one elevation were shown and the project described. Those were Pages 2 to 5 in PDG's submittal as part of this application. Not shared with us were Pages 6 through 14, consisting of the massing and streetscape studies and previous projects being cited as precedents. After much discussion, largely favorable to this project, the main issue focused on the massing and four-story height being proposed on the Fourth Avenue Monroe Street to the alley side of the site. It was noted that the three-story 35-foot limitation was followed where the project was adjacent to the National Register boundary and historic properties just outside that boundary on the north. This historic height limitation has been the norm throughout the neighborhood, initially by informal agreement between the neighbors, and then in subsequent design guidelines related to the Phillips-Jackson redevelopment district and MDHA, as well as the eventual historic overlay, which we went after because we didn't feel MDHA was doing as good a job at administering the design guidelines. The neighborhood's position to this effect was conveyed to the Historic Zoning Commission in a letter on November 5th, which I believe has been attached. Sort of how we got here is, the neighborhood was largely written off by the neighborhood, by the, by the city, zoned industrial, and basically forgotten about with light industrial uses being pushed up there. In the 1980s, it was basically sort of rediscovered, became part of the National Register in '79. The Neighborhood Association was established in 1980, and by 1986, recognizing the difficulties we were going to have trying to bring the neighborhood back, we sat down with the planning commission and wrote Nashville's first mixed-use ordinance for this neighborhood to address the issue of how we could rezone the neighborhood to make many uses compatible and appropriate. A catalyst for what's basically happened today, which is, I think, an enormous success story for the neighborhood, was the proposal in 1991 to do an auto emissions test site on the 1200 block of Sixth Avenue North, which was protested, and eventually, the city, through MDHA, acquired that whole half a block and worked with the neighborhood to redesignate it for residential development, working with us to create a development plan proposal to bring in developers to, to build small houses, sell small houses. It worked. It's been seen by many of the smaller developers, and now the larger developers, as, you know, appropriate, and this is being used in Salem Town, Hope Gardens, whatever. We don't think that the bicentennial mall probably would have come along without what has been happening in the neighborhood. In 2007, eight, because of the dissatisfaction with the MDHA design guidelines that affected National Register properties, a group came together, the Neighborhood Development Committee, including residents, local developers who'd been developing in the neighborhood, and other businessmen, came together to craft a fairly difficult set of design guidelines that recognized a variety of conditions. It's a fairly unique neighborhood. I was happy to say that this passed on a consent agenda in the Metro Council. Germantown wanted to be rediscovered, redeveloped, and returned to being a vibrant urban neighborhood, one that featured the best of Nashville's past and hopefully future. But in 1980, it was a neighborhood that was rundown, vacant houses, empty, unkept lots, and very unsympathetic and more recent light industrial development. It's a unique neighborhood unlike any other in Nashville. As the city's oldest suburb, first suburb, it has historically been a mixed-use area with businesses and residences together, a pattern that largely continues, and an historic architecture of large and small houses, single and larger units. But it was, and it continues to be, an urban neighborhood with it, unique problems, issues, and factors that made developing design guidelines for its protection fairly difficult to craft.
Michael, real quick, I don't want to interrupt too much. I don't want you to run out of time, so I want to, you might want to just make...
We've got a timekeeper.
I tell you what, just, you do a really quick thing, just maybe one minute, give them one more minute, just because I was thinking that, and I was, if you just kind of wrap up exactly the, you know...
All right. We take exception to the, the issue of extending the height on the Fourth Avenue side. I'll refer you to the site plan that was passed out. The pink buildings are basically within a green border. They are, by consent and design guidelines, everything that has conformed to date to the three-story 35-foot height, recognizing we had difficulties along Third Avenue, Jefferson, Eighth Avenue, and of course, the Worthing property, we had different things going on. That green line goes right through the middle of this proposed project, which is in yellow. That, to us, is a Maginot Line, a dividing line. The project cited by PDG and their proposal showed several on Fourth Avenue, all of which were three-story, one of which was related to a larger project and actually was three stories, but stepped back at the back to three stories and two stories at the front, relating to the, the context of project on the north.
Okay, so they, okay, I think we, so is the height on the fourth is your thing?
So that, basically, that block of the project, we do not support going above three stories. We think this would be a fairly hulking presence in the neighborhood. It's on axis, it's going to be very visible, and it's going to, and in looking at PDG's own massing and other studies, we find it's just overpowering in that particular aspect of the neighborhood.
Okay.
The issue of lacking historic context, other projects on the subsequent pages show similar projects at three- similar projects at three stories that took, did not have that.
I better call Tom now, Mike, I'm sorry, but.
I thought I had five minutes.
You did, I think, I think he gave it to you.
Oh, was that it?
Yeah, you had a little bit more, so, all right. All right, thank you.
Anybody want to finish?
Anyone else would like to speak against this project?
Jimmy Rollins, I got sore throat as well. I live at 1311 Fourth Avenue North. I live across the street from this project, and, and I agree with the Neighborhood Association that the, along Fourth Avenue, that we should keep with the, the three-foot, three-story 35-foot height. If you look at the, looking at the, the height that was presented on the pages, the, it's clearly that it's taller than anything in the neighborhood, it sits right in the middle. We have one historic district sitting inside of another historic preservation area, and, and it just doesn't seem appropriate for it to be so high or sitting right there. The Fourth Avenue, I, I would, I mean, Third Avenue, I would say, probably needs to come to be four, four stories at the maximum, but, you know, that's, that would be up to y'all, but Third, Fourth Avenue, where the residences are, where I live across the street from, these heights are, seems a little outrageous for the neighborhood. We, you know, we did fight to get these guidelines, and we, we welcomed them, and we welcomed this development as well, but the height does seem a little excessive. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm William Hollings. I live at 1237 Sixth Avenue North. One factor that has not been mentioned, although it came up on the contextual question about the area around this, one of the largest pieces of undeveloped property left in the neighborhood is the Cumberland Machine property that runs from Fourth Avenue to Fifth Avenue along Monroe. If this project is approved at this height, it is going to be difficult to deny a similar height on that project, which would push the four-story 45-foot height right into the heart of the neighborhood, and that's something that the neighborhood, I think, and I personally, would like the commission to take consideration of, because you may be establishing a precedent here that will cause problems in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more in the public who'd like to speak against this project? Okay, would people who'd like to speak for the project, please come forward now?
My name is Al, sorry, Lance Bloom. My best friend actually lives in the area, but I just wanted to talk about the Cumberland Machine part. That land is, is actually, even though it is large, you look at it, it's only six-tenths of an acre, and it's very hard to build on that for any kind of large project, so, you know, in deference to what you said, which, you know, my best friend lives in the neighborhood too, we always drive by at 312. I've looked it on a map. It's, it's not something you could build a lot of density on, but, but that's all I wanted to say, and thank you all very much for your time today and this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any others? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion.
I'll say, in, in working with the applicant, to try to, you know, take what's a large-lot project, and I think as Michael stated, when the guidelines were developed, you know, it is not for lack of sophistication or knowledge in the neighborhood of what is likely to happen on, on, you can kind of pockmark the neighborhood, there are sections that are more contiguous in terms of single-family, you know, residences, some small, some large, there's not a lot of homogeneity in the neighborhood, and then there are some holes in the neighborhood where they're, the parcels may not be combined, but that they are, when sold, likely to be these large lots, and if, and the guidelines were written, taking that into account, and so, as we've gone through the process, both in discussions with staff and as the applicant has come to us, to try to tie this back to the guidelines is, you know, certainly is what we've tried to do in advising how, how they might respond to, to the existing conditions. So I just, I wanted to kind of state that, and it's certainly our, our, our charge here today as Commissioners to evaluate the guidelines in terms of what's presented and make a determination based on that, specifically with mass, with regard to the massing and the height.
Was there any, when you do look at that other drawings, it does, going up to extra height, that seem to be different, was there any discussion about that? I guess I'll include staff in with that too, regarding that. Oh, sorry, as it relates to the rest, the district?
I'm sorry, will you repeat the question?
Well, I was, just a discussion about the, it seems to be the only thing that is talked about really is the four-story height, and I was just curious on that, I was kind of starting with Ben, but I guess I should talk with everybody about as far as that being different and how it relates back to the district, going up the extra height.
Yes, I mean, we, we worked with Commissioner Mosley and planning and other departments, and of course, the applicant, to, to meet the historic context, to meet the design guidelines, but obviously, there's a lot more to, for you all to consider and public comment as well.
I think the conflict here is, is not a new one, in that you've got an applicant who wants to redevelop a piece of property that is looking to maximize their investment, and so I think this push-pull of three versus four, and the conversation of three, four, and then some increased height to five, north of the alley between Third and Fourth, is, is directly related to that and what is appropriate, and where, where you nuance that within the adjacency to the district, in that you've got one and two-story historic homes, and then plopped right next to that, you've got what's existing to be demolished, or proposed to be demolished, and then across the street also one-story, you know, a large industrial building with surface parking out in front of it. That's, that's kind of, that's the crux of the issue. I think with respect, just listen specifically to what, to the neighborhood concerns, both of the Neighborhood Association and then also, you know, others who've written correspondence, and some support and, and others in opposition, specifically to that height issue on, on Fourth Avenue.
Ben, going back, I mean, you've been involved over there, that this, the green line that goes between the, the Fourth and, and Third, in the establishment of the maximum height of buildings, this three-story, is that something that, that was, was in the guidelines, or was that just sort of, sort of arrived at as a, as a desirable?
For clarity, this map, this figure ground with the green line is, is not, you know, a reference, in, or a reference of the guidelines, I think, in speaking back, not specific to this project, but specific to consideration of the guidelines, was thinking about projects alley-to-alley as opposed to street-to-street. In, in addition to considering them street-to-street, as alley-to-alley, oftentimes, you know, you want to capture that, capture the street, and that street environment is, is more important to, to form oftentimes, and height, and a lot of the things we talk about, as opposed to just considering between Fourth and Third as one, one thing, so in that regard, I'm saying that in respect to where the green line is drawn, certainly, all those buildings that are indicated to my eye is, that's accurate information, sure.
Well, it's accurate information, but I mean, is that, that three-story, it was a discussion within the neighborhood and sort of the acceptable?
Yeah, I think you have to refer back, and, and on every occasion that we've met, is, is in referring back to the guidelines, we hadn't done our best not to tell the applicant, hey, go do this, certainly, I'm one of many Commissioners, is that you need to be able to defend or propose something that is, that meets the guidelines, and so I think I would reference this back to, and our deliberation is about the adjacency to historic context and how we apply guidelines, and which guy, you know, which of those guidelines are applicable to portions or all of the building, or a block, or, or half a block, or however, however that is. So I think in, with respect to height, 325 is, you know, well, one is, is more general in terms of setting a specific height. I think there are other, there are, there are some hard, hard lines, and maybe staff can fill in the blanks of, in, in the historic district, I mean, in the National Register district, I believe that's where the cutoff is, that there are hard caps to building height in, in, in that area. Is that correct? So there's, I don't think we can look to the guidelines and say, oh, there it is, this equals that, and so approved, you know, that, that doesn't exist.
Okay.
Judgment that we've got to bring to, to what's presented and what the guidelines say.
So this has been going, this has already gone second reading to planning?
Is that correct?
Robin?
It's my understanding the SP is approved, technically, they could be coming to you today with the full project, but chose to come to you just with the massing, which is our new procedure, but this one started before that procedure.
And of course, we can see how much work has been put into by the developer, and also, and we can appreciate that, and also, in listening to the Neighborhood Association, there's been dialogue then between the two consistently? I'm not saying it's as important, you know, I mean, it's important, but.
Between staff and applicant?
The community, the association, or the, the community that's there, Germantown community.
That would be a question for the applicant and, and the community.
Right. Sir?
Sure. We had, we met with the Germantown Neighborhood Organization on, was it November 3rd? Third, November 3rd.
And that's been the only?
We had the only meeting with them, then. We have had separate meetings with other residents or business owners, going back to late, I want to say the 24th or the 30th of, of October, had, had some separate meetings with, just some other folks that were suggested that we might want to meet with in the neighborhood, but the only official was that November 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
I guess then what's, staff is fine with the height contextually, because it's close to the edge of the district?
Well, again, I think there's more here to consider, since now here at the public hearing, you are, you have public comment to go on as well.
Well, um, oh, good, I was about to say, from the Planning Commission representative.
Of course, the Planning Commission will be considering their land use policy, community plan amendment, or, excuse me, this has not gone before Planning Commission? Sorry, I've missed some meetings, so.
It, it has started with them, but they are waiting, the final is waiting on the recommendation from this body.
Okay, so the commission itself has not acted on this?
And, and I'm not really sure, to be perfectly honest, since it didn't.
Yes, we, we've had our, our Planning Commission meeting, we have gone through second reading as well, that was, and our third reading was scheduled for, for last night.
At council?
At council.
At city council.
At city council. The Planning Commission was, was prior to that.
The Planning Commission has approved it?
Was prior to that.
The Planning Commission approved it?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, and we see a lot of, we see a lot of projects.
I apologize, yes, we, Planning Commission approved, and then that's how we move to the, the council.
City council.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so it's really, technically, it's only the council that is waiting for our recommendation on massing before they act on third reading? Is that what I'm understanding?
I apologize, I'm not really sure of the process with planning. I know that planning staff is waiting on a recommendation from us here tonight. Again, since you have the ability to review the whole design, no matter what their decision was, I apologize, I didn't look up exactly where that is in that process.
I might be able to.
Well, that's a good point, but go ahead.
I might be able to add something to the discussion. The Metro Code entitled 174106, subsection C, contemplates that SPs will come before this body before they are approved by the Planning Commission. It also requires that even after an SP is adopted by the full council, that the SP shall comport with the design guidelines for historic overlay district or an MDHA redevelopment district, whichever one it lies in, and whichever is most restrictive. That being said, the way I understand the sequence of events, this one kind of is a little bit out of sequence in terms of the Planning Commission having not heard from this body before it, it rendered its decision. That being said, even at this stage, if, depending on what this body does and how it reviews it, that may work into what the council does, and that may work into what the applicant decides to do, I don't know, but that's information that they would then have, given the fact that they're going to have to comply with the historic overlay district anyway, it would behoove everyone to probably know what this body thinks at this stage of the game. The way the, the process is going to move forward in the future, the staff of the Historic Zoning Commission and the staff of the Planning Commission will, will collaborate earlier in this, in the, in the process, so that this body will have an opportunity to weigh in on areas, particularly dealing with massing, and then ideally, that matter would come back before this body for specifics regarding materials and design and things like that. I'm gathering that that didn't exactly happen that way, but this is what this, this body is looking at at this point, to kind of weigh in before it's actually happened. As you recall, I think some time ago, we may have had one that actually passed the full council before this body ever heard from it, and then we were positioned to where we couldn't approve something because it didn't comport with the guidelines, even though the SP was already on the books, and that's what is trying to be avoided in this instance, I do believe.
And we are, it's just the SP that we're looking at today, but, which includes the massing, but we're not looking at the actual building at this time.
I think.
As a practical matter, you may actually be looking at the final drawing, I don't know, I'll have to yield to the applicant on that question.
But we will get another applicant.
What you're reviewing today is the massing?
Not the project.
Which is the project? The massing of the buildings, where they are on the lot, their setbacks, roof forms.
Like, for instance, if I said that I didn't like the little bridge, this would be the time to bring up no bridge, wouldn't we have another chance?
The bridge could be considered a detail, but I would say, you know, any issues you have with it meeting the design guidelines, I'm sure the applicant would like to hear about that now.
Okay. I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll also add that it's, there, it's not a common occurrence that we'll have large projects in districts, but we certainly do, and, and I think there's, you know, when you're looking at a single-family home, we can, we can chew those up pretty readily in five or 10 minutes, I, I've chewed through, that's probably not the right, we can, we can understand those and vet those in a relatively short period of time. On something this large, in past experience, it's both difficult for the staff, and oftentimes, there are details, if the die is cast, and you've got an applicant that spends thousands, perhaps approaching hundreds of thousands of dollars, and needs to back up three steps on something that, that just couldn't be foreseen, or an interpretation that, you know, they were liberal, or, or somebody was more conservative, or who knows what, that this would both prevent, having, to have that outlay would benefit both applicants and also constituents, that there'd be an opportunity to look at, not necessarily get tied up in all the details, but that you could look at the overall massing of something. but that you could look at the overall massing of something that was of this size as compared to a much smaller project. It's both helps staff, and, you know, between metro departments to try to resolve some of those issues early on, as opposed to getting the details of columns and ins and outs of porches, particular details.
I'll just start, oh, go ahead.
Well, but I just wanted to clarify, I think to answer your question is, we are not approving elevations today, is that correct?
That's correct.
We're approving massing, yeah, massing setbacks, bulk. Okay, and, yeah, I was curious, because we don't have an elevation of the Fourth Avenue side in our packet, do we?
No, that elevation was just given to you to give you an idea of what, what they're planning on doing, but all the details of that, the ins and outs of that, the entrances, the windows, materials, all of that will come to you a second time.
All right, what was your question again?
It wasn't a question, it was just, I was just stating that, that we don't have an actual height elevation that the buildings, we say it's four-story, but it, I mean, you don't know how...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, yes, that's there, and if you'll look in your staff recommendation, the heights are called out.
Now, they're 45, is that 45?
There are different ones. Let me bring this up here.
Yeah, they, they are, it's in the hot, it's on there.
Well, I remember reading them, but I can't...
The three portion is 35 feet, the four stories is 45 feet.
Look at page seven, I think.
Seven.
Is that right?
The bottom of page seven is where that starts.
No, I see them, I see, okay.
What's the five-story?
54 feet, and these are, these are approximations from grade.
I think to get us, maybe to get, get to the point, I mean, certainly, we, we're here to approve it, I don't want to focus primarily on one thing, because some of the height in particular, and we've heard from interested parties, constituents, both in written and folks who've appeared today, that height along fourth seems to be the particular sticking point, but I think, considering it in total, there, the application is here to consider ma, you know, setbacks, mass, scale, and height, so we have to take that into account, but in particular, the sticking point is height along Third Avenue, and I think it's important to look, as we understand that and wrap our minds around it, 325, you know, new buildings shall be constructed to heights compatible with adjacent context. Projects on or near the edge of a less intensive area, certainly, I think this project qualifies for that, it's right adjacent to the, to the historic district, to the National Register boundary, and there's a one-story house just to the north on the same side of the street, and albeit some of the taller two-story houses across Fourth Avenue from this development, you know, the text here, projects near a less intensive area, substantial incompatible in scale, incompatibility in scale may result from different development standards in two areas, and may be compounded by, you know, the physical factors of, of grade change here are not, there is some, but it's not dramatic in this case, and so, again, it goes on to say factors to consider in analyzing height, bulk, scale, and impact, or distance from the edge of an existing structure or less intensive area, the effect, site size and shape, certainly, because this is multiple lots combined, that one applies here.
I guess, I don't...
Do you understand all that?
But I guess, if we, one of the concerns is, is that the green line between Third and Fourth, and the three to four stories, as we consider this as a total project, then some of the concerns that, that we've heard could be addressed, possibly, later. I mean, we're not, we're not approving three, four, three stories, four stories.
You would be...
No, we aren't.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever you want the massing to look like, the board needs to act on that in one way or the other, approve or disapprove, or prove conditionals today.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, it's not, it's not a matter of them being able to come back, okay, all right.
When they come back, they'll be coming back with some details...
Sure.
On the materials and things like that.
Okay, all right.
So I just throw out, it's about the, keeping it the three-story, I'll just throw that out, and, you know, what is you guys feeling about that? And I also feel like the, this is a detail, I guess, but that the bridge actually takes more of away from the type of neighborhood, but that's, but like, you know, I could be convinced otherwise, but I always feel like skybridges get people off the street, and seems to be not a kind of urban planning kind of thing.
I'm not, not disagreeing with that, I think from the applicant's, this density of development requires a parking garage, and this body reviewed the Vista project, not the same constraints for different, different site, different issues, but I think wrapping, having a garage that's not exposed at the street, which would, would give an entrance at the street, would be maybe less desirable than, than connecting what amounts to an internal, you know, internal parking function, internal to the residence here, it's not an advertised public parking garage or anything like that, that while maybe not the optimal solution, I think other alternatives are less desirable, perhaps. I would offer that for consideration of why a skybridge would help here.
As opposed to coming down the floor and going...
You know, I'm parked on the fifth floor, riding an elevator all the way down, going over, and I live on the fourth floor, you know, across the way, but I don't want to be indefensive.
Well, for my convenience, I won't disagree, it's just, it seems like it just takes away from the neighborhood.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, to that. What do you guys think about the, let's just go to the point, what do you guys think about four-story to three-story? I think that's our, the height is the biggest thing we, I think we're okay with just, as a project, as the massing of it is, we're just, the, in matter of fact, it seems like even the Neighborhood Committee is just concerned about that, too, so what do you guys feel about the, the height?
I have a question. Do we have a map of, did you show a map of the National Register District? I know we're outside of it here, right, but adjacent?
Yes, if you look on page 10 of your packet, the dotted, the black and white dotted line...
Oh, right.
Is the National Register boundary.
So, Chair, when you are commenting about the three floors, and do we just, do we say, do we outline a guideline to say that we keep those three, the three floors towards the residential section? Is that what we're...
Actually, I mean, even that's good, I just want to get some discussion about it, I think we're kind of talking around it, so I just want to...
To keep that massing and scaling...
Is that what we feel like?
Yes.
Is that what, so you, I just want to hear...
Because, because those, that whole square there, as pointed out in the handout that Mr. Emmerich sent out, and also knowing that, that district, the three floors is very common in all the, you know, most of the new-built infills, so that would seem comfortable for the neighborhood to see that, that type of mass in towards residential, which you have single homes, or the duplex, or whatever.
Well, in the plan, though, they have, they've sort of addressed that, in where they've scaled it down to three stories, and then, and pushed it back.
But do we have to confirm that as a body?
No, no, but I mean, you know, I think that has been addressed, it's, that, that is a solution that's been presented.
What about you guys?
Sorry, I was also looking for the map of which of the surrounding structures are historic, like the one directly to the north of the property, and facing fourth.
Excuse me, on that same map, on page 10, the black lots are contributing, and the probably looks like gray on your copies are the non-contributing.
Okay.
So the northern end butts up like to contributing.
Maybe it was.
Both on Third and Fourth.
Right.
Robin, so again, the black is contributing.
That's right.
And, verbalizing it, and so, on the Third Avenue side, when you have a contributing structure, those cannot be demolished, correct?
Technically, I mean, we would have to review that, but the idea is to keep contributing, yes.
Okay. So if we're talking about any future structure there, that would be the challenge?
Any future structures would likely be at the corner of Third and Taylor.
Outside of the district.
Within the district, but outside of the National Register boundaries.
Again, questions, just to clarify, since we're strictly here talking to, about massing height setbacks, looking at page nine of the PDG Germantown Submittal, which shows the three-story stepping up to four-story, could you say again what the, there's a number of stories, but there's also feet in height? What are they proposing as the maximum height in, in feet on the three-story and four-story portions?
And that's on the bottom of page seven, and continues to eight. The three stories is 35 feet, four stories along Fourth Avenue North is approximately 45 feet, there's a section of three stories that's 31 feet, five stories is 54 feet from grade, and again, these, you know, the grade changes, so these are just approximations. The middle portion, where you have that fifth level portion is 40 feet, and then transitions down to three stories, which at that point is 32 feet on Third Avenue.
Okay. And one thing that I think was stated earlier, can you clarify that there are other, there are other projects that are this high?
You approved one a month or two ago, outside the National Register boundaries, further up Third, doesn't, it's not on Fourth, it's just on Third, it's five stories.
Okay, closer to that, 54, potentially, but on Third Avenue. Go ahead.
If you, it's important to reference the, to understand both the community plan and reference the document in terms of specifics on streets, Third Avenue is, Third Avenue, and I think that was stated by both the applicant and by those concerned citizens, and by the Neighborhood Association, is that the guidelines mention specifically the Worthing Site, Roselle Parks, Jefferson Street, and Third Avenue, and so, in taking all those things into account, is, and this project at Third Avenue at the corner pushes that height up at, at five, and so responds to that, or that's viewed as more permissive, certainly along Third Avenue, and so, I think maintaining the distinction that the guidelines intended, it's just important to note that.
How, is Worthing, is it five?
Four.
Four?
A tall four.
A tall four.
With some tower elements that are five.
Let's take a class.
It's four.
Four.
Worthing may be five, but I don't know.
So there is, I guess that's where I was trying to push to, so we do have some other contextual developments that may be different areas of the district, but that do, are that height.
I think, yeah, a consideration of what those are, the Worthing Site being specifically identified as, as something unique and an anomaly within a greater gridded street plan that, that's more regularized and has, you know, a little different development pattern, that Third Avenue merely by the fact, it's not a collector's street, it's an arterial that makes a significant connection with downtown and Metro Center, and of course, Jefferson Street is, you know, a major arterial through the street, through the neighborhood, through the city as well. That was taken into consideration, I'll say, when the guidelines were developed.
Well, I'll just go and say that, you know, I think the massing is appropriate on Third Avenue, and I think the bridge, the skybridge, while certainly not historic, there's not a historic precedent for it, I think is a somewhat necessary component here, there's other skybridges that have been approved, we've approved, I think, on another project to the north.
You missed that.
And, most importantly, I think it's setback, it's, you know, in this elevation, you see, it's probably 30 feet back from the, from the facade, where it crosses the alley, it appears in the site plan. So I really think the question comes down, to me, comes down to Fourth Avenue, and, you know, the case that, that has been made for, you know, three stories on keeping, you know, a maximum of three stories on, on Fourth Avenue, and, you know, I think the further south you get along Fourth Avenue, I probably have fewer concerns, in other words, if right at the corner of Monroe, it popped up to Fourth, you know, as a corner element, you know, might be appropriate, you know, you're getting away from the National Register District, you're getting, you know, closer to other new development, and less historic context, I suppose, and less residential context, you know, down in here, so, you know, I don't know that we can redesign it here, and whether or not the fourth floor can, you know, the stepping down to three stories can help, happen closer to Monroe, but that's my gut, based on the existing historic context, the precedents that have occurred to date, and the interpretation of the guidelines along Fourth Avenue would be to recommend stepping down to three stories on, on Fourth, with the possibility, or I'm sort of throwing it out there, is, you know, I would be open to four stories at the corner of Monroe for some distance up, you know, up Fourth Avenue.
But, you know, I mean, why don't we kick that one out, and see what kind of comments we get back? As a motion?
As a motion.
Anyone, do you, do we want to say anything about that, Ben, or, I mean, if we want to kick it out?
Something to keep in mind is, I think, with the garage, and this isn't an argument against, but there, there's a garage internal that, that part of the building screens, so I think we need to be, if, if we were to propose a motion, that certainly, we need to understand that that stepping back from some, I'm not, not terribly concerned about that, because I think there aren't views that, that would be offensive from necessarily, and certainly the final design of the garage, and whether it's sloped in or flat, and how that would be treated, it's just something to keep in mind as, as we're looking at this, that the building at, between the alley and... the alley and Fourth is screening a garage. That's not an argument to say, well, it's eight-four stories, it's just something to be aware of as we consider them.
Yeah, and, and given that the garage is set back, I'm not sure exactly how tall the garage is, but I'm more concerned about what happens at the street along Fourth Avenue, in other words, at the parking garage.
I think we should, yes, I think we should be.
And even if a corridor, and I know a single-loaded corridor is already inefficient, but if they needed to connect a corridor across there for exit purposes or something like that, I think it's, you know, I would be comfortable if the building stepped up to four stories essentially at the garage.
And that's, that's been utilized, I think, successfully on Madison Street when we reviewed the Vista project, that that was most internal to the neighborhood, and certainly made that recommendation to the applicant as we were talking about these various issues, is that that was a successful street. I think if you talk to a lot of folks, you know, while it's a tight street, that that building, which is five stories on Jefferson because of the grade, steps down to three, more internal to the neighborhood, and in keeping with adjacent, directly adjacent context. It's a successful strategy.
I think we've got a good direction here, let's...
I have a procedural question before you all move forward. I did not hear the Chair ask if the applicant had any rebuttal earlier. I don't know if they reserved any rebuttal time, but I wanted to make sure that...
Well, the rebuttal was for the public.
It was.
Yeah.
But I never heard, I didn't hear whether or not they reserve, I don't know if they reserved any time. They did reserve time? They did reserve time.
They do deserve time, for sure. Would you like to rebut the public? You can't rebut what we...
Right.
You can rebut whatever.
They can only respond to any questions of the board, but if they were, if they reserved rebuttal time and they were not giving it, then...
I think it's only regarding the public.
Right, that's correct. That's correct.
So if anything that was said during the public part you'd like to rebut, your, will give you an opportunity now. I had them going. We were going.
If they appealed it, I didn't want it to be on that ground.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, I'm Monty Winlow with Price Development Group, and no, the applicant does not have any remarks for the rebuttal phase of this. If the commission were to ask us if we had remarks concerning a possible solution to Fourth Avenue, I would be more than happy to address that.
All right. I will listen.
I'll, yeah. I'd like to hear what...
Yeah, go ahead, you can...
Thank you, Commissioners. If you could be so kind as to pull up the site plan, and that would be back from this picture?
Back.
This one. Thank you very much. No, thank you for your time. Again, I'm Monty Winlow with Price Development Group, and I'll be brief here. The neighborhood concern seems to obviously center around Fourth Avenue. And while we've not seen this exhibit with a green line through it, I can only imagine that it represents a common practice or common understanding of the neighborhood of what the district guidelines show. But I won't try to interpret that as I'm standing here speaking ad hoc to you, okay? We do want to be good neighbors. We're excited about trying to be in this district and be in this neighborhood. And while we feel that some elements of the west half of the property, from the alley to Fourth Avenue, are important to us in terms of the building, I also understand the neighborhood point of view here. We would be amenable to extending the three-story section along Fourth Avenue, say, up to the, and if you could look at the site plan there, the B1 unit in blue. Now, the reason I've picked that is, I think that four-story element at the corner of Fourth and Monroe is important to us, okay? In terms of good planning of the property and the street presence there, to maintain that height at the corner. But I think north of that corner, we could step down the building to three stories there, along there, which would include some of the Cumberland property, as well as all of the district property there across the street. We would wish to keep the four-story section along Monroe from Fourth Avenue to the alley. Otherwise, then, the building's going to look very choppy, with a four-story element there at the corner, then stepping down to a three, and then up again. It's going to look like a child's building blocks. But we think that, based upon what we've heard today, if the commission were to entertain a motion along those lines, we would certainly be amenable to accepting those conditions.
That's what I'm going to do.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Any, thank you. While the applicant's up, is anyone have questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation with one additional condition, I suppose, for the massing of this project, that the Fourth Avenue elevation be limited to three stories along the front facade, recognizing that the parking garage may extend above that, to the southern edge of the, what's illustrated as the garage entrance on the site plan.
Okay. We have a motion as...
And that the four-story, you know, that it would step up to four stories there, and the remainder of the massing as proposed.
Okay, any discussion, more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Another meeting has been scheduled in this room, so we will save the change of rules of order and procedure until next month.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Still moved?
I did.
Adjourn.
No, I'm...